It supports property values and I don't know, I mean you've got to do something. But as a business owner and somebody who has some of these things which could be a nuisance, I don't want a loophole. I want to apply for a Daniel City license, business license, and I'll cancel the one in the other municipality where I've got it. As soon as I know that with faith my business license can be purchased and I won't be in violation the second I purchase it.
Okay, so I went through, my name is Brent Waterman. I went through that with Wasatch County. I own, when you guys, when we became a township, I own two businesses that are in the county. I went in to renew my business license and they told me, you know, they asked me where my home office was and I told them, Danny. They said, no, you have to get your, and Eric probably remembers this, I used to have like four business licenses. I had a water company, I had an RV park, and all those were in the county, and then I had two that were based at my home. And luckily, when they told me that, I went down to the office and I said, you need to write me a letter telling me that that's where I gave my business license. Because what that meant was, was the inspections from the fire department, all of that did not go. So Wasatch County had no control over what I was doing in Wasatch County. So that, when that happened, it was, I mean, they were going to take my, they were going to take my business away in Wasatch County because I got my business license from him. If I wouldn't have had that letter from, from the, I don't remember who it got from, whoever sent me the other address. If I wouldn't have had that, they were going to, they were going to take my business license away in the county, they're going to shut my business down. That's one issue. The next thing is, is it's, the onion gets deeper than what Joe was saying because in businesses, most businesses, especially corporations and LLCs, will not own their equipment. So I'm going to use my business as an example. Not that I'm Donald Trump, but we all do what our tax man tells us. And so what happens is, is my business doesn't own any. All that personal equipment out there that somebody wants to call junk is mine. And we don't put that in the business name, and I'm sure that everybody else does the same thing. That's the way our country is built. We design businesses, corporations, LLCs, to protect people so that they dare to take risks. You can't afford to lose your house, it can't be part of your business, you can't afford to lose all your vehicles. So what we do is we incorporate and then we lease from me to a business. So, so when you come out and you see stuff in somebody's yard, his truck is probably not even owned by his business.
It's in a holding company.
It's in a holding company. So, so now you're going to, we've got to, we've got to look at this realistically, the way our government is drawn up, it protects enterprise. And so a lot of the things that you're looking at belong to the individuals and not the business anyway. So you're not going to have an effect on most of that. At least that's the way I see it.
Chris?
It might turn into one. Thank you.
Your computer's going to stop. Chris Anderson. So the question of where is my business really at? Ask them what address they have on their IRS forms, where they file their taxes for. If they file it from the post office box, great. If they file it from their home address, then maybe that's where they have their business? Just in the paper.
Down, down, anybody else have any last comments?
Do I really have to try?
I am with Chris, having a business, doing the licenses and things. Eric had a business when he, when he was in business. If we have, if you have an office in your home, or anything that has anything to do with the business, your business, you're getting your mail there, you have office there, you're doing any work out of that home, you should have a license with Daniels. Doesn't matter if you're doing work for Daniels, you are running a business out of Daniels. That's how it's always been since they've had it. That's, and there's a lot of people that don't do it. But that is, if you have an office there, just like Chris said, where's your license? Where's your state license number coming? Where's your address it's going to? That's where you're giving them that address, they're assuming your business is being run out of that place where the address is.
So again, to make sure that you don't get the loophole, it's like, I wouldn't want somebody coming in and saying, well, if that's the only standard, post office boxes are so cheap, and just to say, okay, wait a minute, I got a post office box, you guys can't regulate me, you can't do anything you want, and it's like, I can put this stuff and I'll call it agriculture. And so to me, I, I agree with that, and that's pretty much how I think the state tax commission looks at it, and how some of the laws of the state are, is, but it seems like a post office box would give a lot of people a loophole that's like, man, it can't just be where you're accepting email, because that's too easy to get.
I can imagine that being one of the only or few criteria, because the parking, you know, many of the things have come up with the parking of anything, you know, vehicles, the employees, the type of business at homes, and so, yeah, that would certainly not be the only criteria for sure.
Mayor Doug Taylor, with this, I'm Tom Rawlins, by the way.
You have to go up there.
Thanks for that.
I've made this comment in previous meetings regarding this, and I just would repeat it for everybody to think about. For those people who are having issues, and I had a horrendous trucking company next door to me, diesel fumes from four trucks in the house at 2:30 in the morning, welding, banging, all sorts of noise until 4:00 in the morning, it was horrendous. On the other hand, I also understand and realize that people have to make a living. I do not believe that the issues that are in question in this discussion can be comprehensively dealt with by a home occupation ordinance. I think that we also have to enact and enforce such ideas nuisance in the town. And having to do that means we have to have some means of enforcement. And I think that the obligation on Eric already is way too high. I've also been in downtown Salt Lake, I've had a home occupation license in Bountiful, and for things that make sense, where there's only quarter acre lots, probably don't make sense where we do have 70 acres. And for things, downtown Salt Lake has gotten so impossible to deal with, there are so many restrictions and so many enforcements in the neighborhood that I was in, that I operated a business in downtown Salt Lake, all of the neighbors in the neighborhood convinced, you know, each other, we talked back and forth, that if we had as many police patrols in that area as we saw zoning ordinance officers, there would be no crime. We literally would see seven to eight zoning enforcement officers in a daily basis every single day, maybe one patrol car every week. It's just amazing. Unfortunately, like we are a small town and we're growing, it's something that we don't have the immediate out of pocket answers, and home occupation addressing is one way to go, but I don't think we can ignore nuisance. The company that was next to me was fully rubber stamped by the county, and yet they were still a nuisance, and there wasn't a thing that anybody could do. I think we need to address nuisance with all of these things.
Hey, Tom, would you mention to the public your title with the town?
I'm sorry?
Commissioner, aren't you a commissioner?
I am on planning commission, I'm, I think the newest member, but this, I'm speaking right now, I'm taking that hat off, I'm just a citizen.
I just hated to see the introduction and miss you.
Well, I came in late, I was sitting over here, I'm sorry, there wasn't, I could sit on your lap, like, or Jay. No, that's my opinion, and I think that what we're doing here is a good step in the right direction, but please, let's not ignore nuisance.
Just a comment from the code, we do have sections 421, 42, 43, plus nuisances on property, super facility nuisances, declaration of nuisances, so we, we would just need to tie our code back and indicate these things are considered nuisance.
Well, okay, Jay, the point is, talking about where do you do businesses at a PO box, in fact, do you have a business license in another city? And yet, you're bringing your trucks home, they're idling all night long.
Right.
There's really no reason to go after home occupation, because home occupation is irrelevant in that case. What it is, is that
Nuisance.
You can't be idling the truck with diesel smoke filling the neighbor's house at 2:00 in the morning, regardless of whether it's home occupation or not, that has to be addressed in a different manner.
Right, and this, this will sound negative, because it is, that's one of the reasons that we became a town, is because the county was not interested in enforcing nuisance, and we were tired of being the county's dumb.
I guess what I'm saying is, this is great, let's, let's do something reasonable, let's not overstep the way Salt Lake City has.
Right.
But let's do something reasonable here, but let's also realize that in addition to home occupation, there's got to be some way for somebody to knock on that door at 2:00 in the morning and say, shut those things off or you're going to jail.
I agree, nuisance has to be addressed.
You know, part of that would be an annual renewal of the permit, rather than automatic renewal of the permit.
That's how it's set up.
I see some guidelines, but yeah, I think that's important, because if there's been complaints and the guy said, you have, you know, you can park one truck and then you have four or five neighbors complaining, you say, sorry, are these, a good way to control that, is it an annual, are these complaints notated on any businesses or anything else, or residents tied to that, so it comes up on the computer?
John, I do know that when you call the sheriff's department out, it's notated in the sheriff's.
It's notated there, but
But for the town?
We got.
I don't think we have access to that.
Well, as
We're asking if it's being done.
My question is, do, with this new computer program that we're getting, do we have the ability to add comments where there's been complaints to a business so they can be addressed, whether it's during that complaint or?
So, so the last, the last thing we had, and what we've tried to determine is, is it's complaint driven, so we, we've come to, over the months, that a letter, a signed letter needs to be addressed to a complaint, so thereby if it goes past a certain point and we have an actual complaint, that our planning department can use as a complaint. There is no doubt in my mind that if he has that complaint, he will do his job. Without that, it can be all the hearsay, and I think this, and I hope this, that there's nothing that's on paper, so that's, we have decided as a council, it needs to have an address, so, excuse me, a signature on it. Makes Eric's job a lot easier, you know, make, you know, once it's in black and white, it's an easy one to enforce, and he'll be glad to do that, but he needs a signature by a complaint. So all of us that have had complaints, I've heard them, you know, I have people come to me, and I certainly appreciate, and I respect that they have the time to come and talk to me, I just kind of heard them, we need to have that letter, because once Eric can have that, then the next step can be taken. Without that, it's just, once again, discussion, so.
Yeah, and that complaint, if I get a written complaint, it never makes it to relicensing, that complaint's handled immediately, so.
Does that go in a file with that application?
No, because we haven't, we haven't had a complaint on a business that has gone beyond what?
Gone beyond that.
Right, as soon as you talk to somebody, they're willing to fix that, most people want to be good neighbors, so I didn't know that was a problem. Some people fix that. There's, there's a clear method of, and avenue to go if there's a complaint, somebody doesn't want to comply, I mean, that's pretty simple. We've had people in jail before, so.
But do you keep track of the complaints of somebody, like, say I, I, say I write a complaint on somebody, I give it to you, then the person takes care of what I complained about, but do you still keep that complaint on file?
Yes. Five years.
Did you have it on me?
Well.
Yep, I do know.
Two more thoughts. Eric, in plain defense advocate, was that not all people, when you go call on them and say, well, there's a problem here, let's take care of it, not all people will do that. The trucking company that was next to me told us very, and I think we need to be careful, and this was my other point, I was going to make, I think we need to be careful about agriculture, because the trucking company that was next to me said, if we lose this trucking company, we are starting a pig farm, and it's going right against your fans.
Luckily we have code against that, too.
Well, that's great, but I mean, there are things that, that in agriculture, like Kim said, we're going to look the other way at a little bit, and that they are just as offensive as somebody who's doing business. A John Deere engine is a John Deere engine, whether it's in a tractor, whether it's in a compressor, or a generator, or anything else, it makes the same exact sound.
And those complaints need to be signed, and they're probably correct.
They should be. To request, I'm sure they'd have to be?
Yeah, because nobody can say, hey, we got a complaint, but we won't tell you who it is.
That's the whole point of having the signature that Eric says is due.
Problem is, when we go to court, I have to have a witness. If you're the offended person, guess who the witness is? There you go. And that's what I have to have when I go to that doorstep. I have to have that, absolutely, and I, I really don't have time to go on these, and so to just chase a verbal complaint, and when it comes down to it, it's because they don't like your dog, has nothing to do with the truck.
So everybody get rid of your dogs and we'll all be good.
Richard Willis, maybe a little off the subject to this, but I was, I'm originally from Teton Valley, Idaho, Victor, Idaho. Well, we kind of have a similar situation, that's one of the reasons I have a place up here, is because it's similar in a lot of ways. All the billionaires came into Jackson Hole and chased the millionaires over the hill. And in an effort to protect themselves, they decided that this five acre lot standard was a great idea. Personally, I think it's the dumbest idea in the world, because you can't raise enough livestock on five acres, so you put junk on it, or you run another business on it, and that valley has just been trashed with absolutely idiotic stuff over the years, I've watched that happen, and it's just, you know, breaks my heart every time I go through there. And I do think, I'm not saying that we shouldn't have them, I just think that
I kind of think that you're looking at it from a different perspective, he's, you see it as this guy's an idiot for trying to run this business, and let the American drink. I think you kind of need to open your eyes a little bit more on
No, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying
These are products that are not at each other's, so.
No, I'm not, let me just say, I'm not at all against somebody running their business. Biggest problem that they have up there is, you know, for five acres, they're not going to go out and buy a tractor, they're not going to, so they end up with a, you know, 20 foot front yard and then the rest is weeds. That's, that's what, that's what we end up, that's what happens up there. It's not so much the businesses, it's just, you know, it's just a collecting point of garbage for a lot of these people, they come in and build a million dollar home and they, but they only really want to have an acre and a half, and, but they're stuck with three acres they don't really, can't take care of. So, no, I, I, you know, I go my own business and I, I'm behind you 100%, I just think that, that was, as was pointed out, I don't think the home occupation thing is nearly your problem as much as it is the complaints and, and the problems with it. And that's why I brought up the thing about the Airbnb's, those people, even though, I mean, they, places where they're going in and actually making them get permits, they get a permit, if they get three complaints, they're out of business for at least one year. If they don't get complaints, then they're probably not, you know, well, the difference is, they're making, they're making money that they may need, and as long as you don't, you know, as long as it's not causing anybody else a problem, you're parking in their driveway.
But that's a nuisance.
Yeah, it's, it's still, there's already ways in there to combat these problems.
Right.
So, but I do know that Washington County and Summit County, if you have a second home in those places, it doubles your taxes, and your primary residence is where do your income tax returns go to? So, you know, I don't know if that answered the question.
Is it in Wasatch County?
Is it in Wasatch? I just know St. George, Park City, both that way, so.
Oh, are you done?
No, I'm done, okay, I'm going.
Thank you guys for your service.
Oh, no. Renee Anderson, I think that most of us out here in this area do not want to have to go through a million permits. I was in somebody's home the other day, and people were, and she was talking about if they need to replace a window, they have to get a permit from their, from their people. I, I would like for us to not have to get a permit if we want to use the bathroom, I mean, you know, I don't know, does anybody else feel that way?
I do, you must.
You know, so that would be my opinion. We do not have to, if we can keep the permits. Pardon? We may keep the permits, um, for your sake, too, because you guys have to take care of them and maintain it and enforce it and, you know, so that's my opinion.
So let's just do, we all want to deal with our property, but be conscious of the neighbor next to you.
Well, and Casey, that, that extends to the people that have been here for 50 years, 50, 60 years, like was mentioned. Are we getting complaints on those places, those people? And if not, if it ain't broke, why fix it?
Because it's broke.
Have we gotten complaints on them?
No, but what we're issuing building or business permits for businesses that don't meet the what's real
No doubt, no doubt. But for some, some of the others that have been here and have been peaceful and have been getting along with the county, I don't know why we've got to upset the, the road boat.
But that's why we're here, we're trying to accommodate them, we're just trying to make it easier for them to, to meet the requirements needed, and, because as a contractor myself, I didn't meet the code either, I was just like, why is it? Not anymore.
And you're on the council?
Not anymore. But you have to be able to work with these people, because when I came home from work, I had my, my work truck in my trailer.
Did you have a lot of fights with neighbors over?
No, I didn't.
That's the point.
But that's what I'm saying, though.
That's the point.
Why can't we rewrite this so that it accommodates those type of people? So that when you pull in, you know you're already in compliance, you know everything is fine, you're not going to lose your, your license the next year because they found out that you're bringing your trailer home.
And also, if you want to do something like that, like if you want to do a business, then you look at the code and you say, I need to meet these specifications.
As long as we're able to do that.
Right, right. But that's the whole point of this, was just making it so that it's fair for everybody, and we're making it to the point that, you know, we do welcome, I like the diversity of Daniel, I like everybody's input, I like the way that if you go to a neighbor, you know his talents can be used, you know, anywhere throughout our own town, take care of each other, instead of having to go out to find them. We've got such a diverse group of people, I don't want to get it one sided or lopsided for
And that's the point, is, is that if we take that into consideration, we're going to do great. But so many times, so many times, the loud complainers are the only ones that get hurt. And other people who are minding their own business and are just quiet and getting along with their neighbors, they get written out of the code. And I don't, I don't personally want to see that happen.
That's why we're all here, that's why we're doing this. Exactly, I mean, that's why we've got everybody's inputs, and now we're just going to take everybody's So I have to say, that's why John made the extra effort and the other folks that helped you to make sure that they get those comments in.
I, I have one comment, Mayor. I received an email from Tim Jones, and I'll just read it.
Who was Tim Jones, and is he in the city?
Yes, he owns a lot.
He lives in Daniel.
He lives in Daniel, Steve, right off of, um.
He's on 6 East.
6 East.
I think there's a Tim Jones on 6 East right across from me.
Does that answer your question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm in a complete, I am in complete agreement with the changes as made in the foreboard meeting PDF on the Daniel website. In the details, however, close attenuation might be paid to the number of employees, employee vehicles that could be parked adjacent to the dwelling or on the street. With the coming elementary school on 3000 South, for instance, some areas might be overloading their infrastructure slash street parking and congestion if not somehow limited.
There isn't a school coming on 3000 South.
Yeah, I'm just reading what he wrote.
I'm just clarifying that for everyone.
Oh, good.
It's back, it's off. It's on Ranch Drive.
Hi, I'm just reading what Tim wrote.
Just clarify.
Okay. I, I have another question I would like to ask the public. We have talked about complaint driven considerations, so before anything's acted upon, there needs to be a signed complaint from a person. And as a council member, I, I wonder about that, because if I drive down the road and I clearly see something out of compliance, and yet it doesn't bother me, should I just let it go? Or should that be something that should be addressed?
If it's at our house, just let it go.
No, I'm asking that seriously, guys, because I, I have a little bit of an issue with, with Dean on this, on this council, and, and I don't have anything in mind that I've seen that's, that's out of whack, or I don't have any examples, but in this complaint driven thing, it often puts a big burden on some people to, to make a complaint.
That's true.
And, well, if, if, a cop doesn't wait to pull someone over until he gets a complaint, or we, the, the rest of our losses are missing based on complaint driven. Okay, but the cop saw that and did that, he didn't get a complaint from someone on the street to pull him over. And, and I'm just asking, it might sound like I'm pro for, for doing that, and I'm not, because believe me, all it's caused me is grief. But on the other end, as, as residents, is that something you would like people to do?
In response, I want people to sign a complaint, that's, that's the formal way to do it.
Yeah.
That's why I feel like it needs to be done. And people, I mean, everybody here wants to address that complaint. So we, if he needs that, he's got to have somebody if he's going to go to the airport.
Okay, so if I see something going on wrong, just let it go? Or I, I could, I guess I could
That's what we want you to do.
Okay?
So for instance, John, I had the same exact thoughts, and said, am I going to be the police of the town every time I see this, or if someone tells me about this? Am I going to come and sign every complaint on everybody? And the answer was, no.
No.
I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be the policeman, you know, so that's where, I kind of came around from, when people came to me, I wanted that, I had the respect for them to take the time out of their day to come to me, but at the other side, I realized that Eric has a job to do if in fact it needs that signature.
And a witness.
Well, but a concern is valid, too, a concern is valid versus a complaint. There are concerns, if we can get in front of it, it doesn't turn into a complaint.
There you go. Just address it.
Okay, I'm going to address what you said, because you know, you know what the code is, and, and I think I told you last month.
What's your name?
My name's Brent Waterman, and in my real job, I'm a consultant for three counties, and electrical codes is what I deal with. And I got to tell you, codes are so often miswritten, they're always misinterpreted. And one of the things that we find is, is the code that we wrote last year, they have to be updated. I mean, we let things sit way too long here. And the codes that we've got, obviously, his business wasn't legal, my business isn't legal, his business isn't legal, I mean, nobody's legal, so there's something wrong here. So if you're driving down the road and you see something that the code doesn't, or the code says is wrong, that doesn't necessarily mean, I mean, to make a complaint is to make a change, that's what we have to do again. If it's like her neighbor was doing to her, then we need to address that, too, but if the code's incorrect, it's incorrect, and we've got to be honest about it, and this one does not make sense.
Oh, I agree with that there, in, in general. John, what I said earlier was not a at random comment. I moved from, well, I still have some stuff rendered down there, State Fair Park neighborhood, okay, very high crime area. We literally see seven to eight zoning enforcement officers driving through there every single day. I had a neighbor two doors up from me, had a drunken guy one night throw a beer bottle or something through his front window, it was a huge window, and he couldn't get it replaced right away, he put some boards up. The zoning officer at 9:00 in the morning drove past and said, take those boards down, you're not in compliance. He said, I can't get glass, I've got to have someone, he says, then you need to take the action to go and get a permit to put boards up. Well, when is that? How long does that take? Well, the next time we meet will be two weeks from now. He said, I'll have the glass by two weeks, I need some work, some way to have security. Some of this stuff can be taken too far. And when we have people driving around looking and nothing else to do, and I'm not saying you are, or the mayor, or anybody else is, but it can happen that when people drive around, that they find things that are out of compliance, and if we just go to them with the big hammer of the town and say, you're going to comply with that, many times it becomes a hardship.
it becomes a hardship. It's very difficult for people to comply in a situation like that. He ended up having to take the boards off, or he was going to have a fine that afternoon.
I think we're, hopefully, we never get to that point.
The other, the other part of that also is, and this was alluded to a moment ago, is that if you do for one, you got to do for everybody. And if you start looking for things that are out of compliance.
Because that, you know, putting boards on there, that's safety and security, because you've got a broken glass, you got to do something temporary.
That's beside the point. The code said you cannot do that without applying to this city.
You're trying to use rational to stretch the government argument.
We don't want to do that, we don't want to do that.
Chris?
So instead of everybody driving around violations, come up with a change, enact the change, make sure that all of the business owners know what they're supposed to comply with, and then when they come in to renew, ask them or inspect them and say, you complying? If not, then there's a chance.
And then there's some of that in there now, if you read through, you can see there's some of that aspect to it now, and then some gone through, a long night, you know, I mean, there's a million reasons why everything didn't get picked up, but that's.
Mayor, I think when anybody applies for a license, we ought to, once we come up to whatever we're doing, we ought to give them a sheet that has those compliance with it.
I'd like to refer to on the last page, E. That's a very powerful figure. Boy, that's pretty encompassing to do what Daniel wants to eat. That's a very powerful figure, and that solves a lot of the problems right there. Does that comply with what your thoughts are? And that solves a lot of the problems, and if you keep that in.
Charlie Claire Wardens.
Is real clear.
The only thing is, it comes down to what's incidental and secondary, you know, that's one person's opinion sometimes, it'd be hard to.
Well, pull out the dictionary and then, you know.
Which dictionary, though?
I think the council should buy a dart board. Nope, you're not in compliance.
I second that.
I'm sorry, policy doesn't let us have sharp instruments.
They might be ricocheting.
Oh, well, get the one with that little thing that sticks. Well, and the thing I would say about that is, the reason we're in this meeting is, we've already talked about the fact we don't probably have more than, very few of the businesses within our town who are operating within code. And so E's quite clear, but then you get to B, and there's nobody who's able to look at that and say, your business is conducted entirely within the residential dwelling, you go back to the goat farmer, or the guy who doesn't park his truck inside his garage every time he's sold.
Wasn't there storage units too?
No, there's.
Are the, no, but I've seen storage units in our town, and that's.
Right, but that's.
No, that was the issue. This is what the code is going to change, and it doesn't say.
What we're talking about is.
This was at the door.
Yes, E is very powerful, but the reason we're looking at this is, we want to modify this code. We want to modify this code so that it fits the fact that people need a lot of, well, one of the things that's come up is, people are feeling the need for accessory buildings. And our current code does not allow for that. So we want our code to say, yeah, if you, if our businesses need accessory buildings, we need to cover what kinds of accessory buildings does our town want. So that we're not looking at, okay, you have five acres, you now have a five-acre building.
Right.
You know, yeah, everything's parked, but it doesn't look.
And I think that if you put it inside, it doesn't look bad.
I kind of really agree with that.
In, in order, it doesn't look bad.
So that's why we're looking at this code, is because there's a lot of good parts in it, but there's also a lot of parts in here that just don't work with what we're doing here. I mean, they might have worked for the county, they don't.
Maybe you guys need to put together a citizen board.
You guys ought to have signed up when you.
Yeah, that's what you signed.
Mark has stood up?
Yes, my name's Mark McAllister. I'm a business owner in Daniels. And I feel like we've talked about a lot of issues, and that everybody's been afraid to really address what they want to hear out of, what they want to allow and do not want to allow. I don't see anybody coming up with numbers with any reasonable suggestions. It's either, it's just kind of like there's nothing happening in the meeting right now. I think a lot of us are nervous to say what we would like because of the retaliation one way or the other from a business owner or from a property owner. I don't know how to come to the end, to the resolve of this without everybody being offended.
I'd just say you're biased and state your opinion.
If I state my opinion, like I said, I'm afraid of what will happen.
We're in the town of Daniel, and everybody knows that we all speak our minds, I mean, everywhere through the county, so please do.
So what I'm wondering is, does, do we need to, you know, if we let the city council members come up with a proposal and have another public hearing and ask if that's in agreeance? Because there isn't too many people here that's coming up with actual numbers or percentages or the amount of employees that are worth talking.
I think that's, that's going to change with every location and every business, so it's, her business needs it, and his, it's all going to be different. So I think that that's going to be the planning commission, in that, in that recommendation that I made, that's going to be the planning commission, they're going to have to ask those questions, they're going to have to look at the surrounding factor, and see what the use is in the neighborhood before they allow twenty trucks on a four to eight. So that's going to be an individual, individual question.
Okay, and then at that point, well, once, once you guys come up with a number and plans, are you going to allow, are you going to throw it out to the public, and are you going to open it up for public in, comment again possibly?
There will not be a public hearing, because this is part of the process, but there's certainly going to be open and public meetings, so it won't be a quote "public" hearing, but as we, as we narrow this down, it'll be public, we'll have discussion, and this room may be more packed or less packed, but we're going to, we're going to be striking it, we're going to come to a document. And that document, whether it has the specificities that you'd like or not, I don't know, but it will be down to where we all have either, you know, three out of the five are going to vote one way or the other when we're at that point. And that input is certainly not done tonight, it's just done maybe, it's going to be ending in this forum, but there's certainly going to be other public comments can be made. That answers your question, Mark?
Yes.
But if you have things and needs that you want, you ought to make them known so that they can consider them when you're making a code.
Then in case you guys look for more work, you got to just mail the form out to every business in Daniels and say, put down everything you do over here. And it might be illegal. Then you'll know everything that is done by all these businesses, and you can start saying, no, this is way out there, or to give you an idea of where the general need is.
Well, I think the letters that were received, John read one, I've received a couple, I've received some phone calls, we're taking the input from Mark, and anything that can be added to this, and it's all going to get, once again, discussed in more detail.
Well, I think that Mr. Baker on the plane, meaning, pointed out a good point, that people, most people, businesses that are in Daniels aren't run strictly just out of a little home office. There are many businesses that have stuff going on outside their home, and some of them, I don't see, haven't seen representatives here. And I also wondered, I mean, we go back to the, people have been here for years and years and running businesses, you kind of look back to when they started, and they've kind of grown their businesses from where they're at, from being a one, one person, maybe you're doing everything themselves and just taking on another person and another person, and all of a sudden, they're kind of outgrown where they're at, and then they're really to move somewhere else. They're kind of regulating themselves in a way to move to a commercial zone or a industrial zone if they want to make their business go bigger. And you can kind of allow that to a certain point by, like you're trying to come up with your numbers, but what if this person that's already been here is to, has got four employees already, and you guys come along and say, you can't have four employees reporting to your work? What are they going to do at that point? I mean, I'm looking at a business that was here before Daniels ever came along, that has a lot of stuff, is probably going to have to relocate. And is there a grandfather clause for these people that were already here?
I think there should be.
I agree. So far, we've looked at it this way, my understanding would be that if it was licensed under the county before we became a town, it was accepted as grandfathered into the town. If it is not, as a legal, if it was an illegal use or legal business operating in the county, it would not be grandfathered in town, even if it is still operating as we speak, it still would not be, you know, a proper use. So is there some of those out there? Absolutely. Is there some that, I mean, once again, it's, you can throw that dart no matter where it sticks and find what we're talking about, but.
But correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, this is the, this code that we have adopted right now is the county code.
Yes.
So you would have to meet this.
Current county code, right?
It was the code, it's been the code for, we'd have to check the dates.
We'll have to check that, because they changed all the stuff on my property out in front. All that got changed, then we even noted that.
So if we look at the grandfather thing, all I'm saying is, we'd need to go back and check the code, and I think you're going to find that it's pretty strict compared to what we're trying to get now.
We want everybody's input.
We've really done nothing but take away strictness out of this code and all these things.
Yeah, I agree, I think that it's more realistic.
The problem is, even if you're grandfathered in, and now all of a sudden that falls under a nuisance.
It's a nuisance.
If it's a nuisance, it's a nuisance.
If that becomes a nuisance, then you could still be closed down for nuisance.
Does anybody have a problem with that? I mean, I think we're, everybody's on board.
Well, nobody does, because nobody's being shut down, but as soon as somebody does, there'll be.
They're a nuisance, they're going to, they're going to change, because they're not going to lose their license for building any different businesses, they're going to adapt and change it.
Or, just before you get down there, if there's something that any of you need to say that maybe you're apprehensive a little bit, send us an email, so we have that information, because we need that information. I understand why you'd be apprehensive about saying something, so.
Now, will that be public?
Everything.
That would, you know, that would be available to the public, I think that.
Under your request, they could get that.
Yeah, so.
Sure, everybody's done?
What I'd like to see is, you know, if we take the time to go through these items, but I know that some is directly affect a lot of these guys in here. Second page, number C, the home occupation does not involve the use of any accessory buildings, ag buildings, or yard space for storage or activities outside of reasonable residential use. That's the one that, you know, kind of hit me, and I want to make sure that, you know, since you guys are all here, is that going to fit with you? Is that going to fit with your business? Is that going to fit, you know?
We talked about that last time.
And that's where I want input, I don't want just this to go through, I want input from you guys to say, should we reword this, or rewrite it, or?
Casey, if you can read through the one that Brent Waterman offered us?
Yes.
Okay, I understand that he writes a lot of code and assesses a lot of code, and I find that what he has written is so concise and straightforward. His version of C says the home occupation uses accessory building and yard space.
Which one is that?
This is in eight twenty-five six, Home Occupation Standards and the General Regulations. So over twenty-five six, Home Occupation Standards. This is the, this is Brent's version of our current code. So it says, the home occupation uses accessory building and yard space, consistent with private homeowners elsewhere in Daniel Township.
Without a township.
Exactly, so scratch that.
Jay, there's one above it also deals with that. Conducted entirely within residential.
Yeah, it has a semicolon.
Residential dwelling and property.
Yeah, and property.
The current version does not say, it says it has to be everything inside that home.
So B and C kind of addresses what some of what we've heard in the public comment is, it's not really realistic to expect everybody is doing, like we've referred to the saddle maker, we've referred to the mushroom growers, all these people that are using accessory buildings.
The mushroom grower falls under agricultural.
Yeah, yes, but he's using an accessory building.
Yes, but doesn't that fall into a different category?
I would think it would, but he had to get a business.
Technically, he didn't. He didn't have to, because it's agricultural. Yes, still, it's the same, it's a farmer raising hay and selling his hay.
Okay, all right, then scratch the mushroom grower, but the saddle maker, you know, and your plumbers and these people who.
Exactly, and that's what I just wanted to see, is, since we've got plumbers, we've got contractors in here.
But they're not operating if you're following the spirit of the home occupation. You have a business where you have, you know, the owner of the business, and he lives on the premises, which is what our code requires. And then he has certain equipment for his business. So if it's a home occupation, it's like Mr. McAllister said, if you outgrow your home occupation, well, then you're looking to move someplace else. And what our code wants to do is prevent somebody from expanding their business beyond the basic home occupation into a full-on commercial outfit, so that he's bringing like twenty-nine cranes and three pumper trucks, and who knows what, all going on on his twenty acres in Daniel.
So couldn't you just limit the size of the building to a percentage of the.
Well, to a square.
Absolutely, so our accessory building code would have to address that. And I like what you said about consistent with what's going on in your town, it's like, so you're not going to walk in and see some huge three hundred by six hundred building, because your normal household doesn't have one.
That's what I wanted the input from.
I walked around, I'm totally bunker. I just want to say, you guys, when me and Eric moved out here, we used to live in Heber. And we moved out to Daniels because we'd raised some kids. And we wanted the property to be able to do that. We are not business owners, well, we, Eric used to have a business, but he doesn't anymore. And I have fought for you guys since for a year. These guys up here have been fighting over this, well, they haven't been fighting, they've been discussing very heavily. This has been going on for at least a year. And I kept, and I kept asking Eric, is it time to bring these, these home, these business people? Nope, not yet. Is it time? Because you guys, I don't know any place that you ever get a business license that they give you the laws and the rules at the same time. But it's not the town's fault that you don't know what the codes are, because they are on the website and they are available to everyone. But I kept telling them, they don't know they're breaking the law. So it's kind of hard, because these people don't know they're breaking the law, because they've just got their business licenses and they're going about their business. So I was so, this has been, like I said, this has been huge, and this, these guys have been here, work here till what? Sometimes eleven o'clock. And it is so wonderful to see this room boom, and see that this is something you guys are all passionate about. Because I still want to be able to raise my kids out here. And raising my boys also consists of derby cars, farming, things like that. You know, my big concern is, is as soon as they're done with you guys, who they going to come after? Us. There, that's the next step. I don't want no CCNRs. None of us do. That's why we didn't, that's why we became a town. We didn't want to stay in the county because of all their rules and regulations. We didn't want the city to come and take over us because of all the rules and regulations. We wanted to come out here to be able to do what we wanted. I believe everybody has a right to their property. I believe that, and this is my personal opinion, I can do what I want. Sometimes my, my treasures is somebody else's junk. Sometimes what I think is beautiful, Eric at Bellingham, isn't. He gets more complaints, because he, we have some property that we lease right against Heber City. There ain't no border, there's a fence. And you know, he goes up there to do hay. And you know, he goes up there to do hay and he gets the cops calling every time. "Why are you doing this? Go home. It's after eight o'clock."
That's when you.
Exactly. And it's like, like Kim said, our whole mission statement for the town was, "We are agricultural town." We're not trying to sneak things in for what's agricultural. It is right there, that's what we, that's what the whole town was based out of, was agricultural. You can still drive your tractor down the road. You can still run a horse down the road. My whole thing is, I still want to be able to raise my kids here. And these guys have done everything, and this is why they want you guys to help them. You as business owners need to say, "Okay, I think ten is a good number. Let's say ten employees is all that can come to our house." You guys need to come and tell them because they're doing the best they can. And they've hit a block and then, so I said, "It's time for a public hearing." That is why, you know, they sent out notices to business owners. And that's why I personally tried to make sure I contacted everyone. Not good for the town because you guys need to be able to come and defend your rights. You have the right to have your business because, like you said, this is, that's what the United States is, right? For us to have freedoms and to enjoy ourselves and to have. But there is, you know, there is laws and the town does have laws for that. But I'm sorry, but I don't think many of you know the law of what is requested in them. And I do think that that would be great is we hand this out and say, "Oh, here, here, Heber, here's your new permit. Let's give you a code." Or go en lista, which I think it already says. It says, it gives you the title and the chapter that you can go to. But I don't think a lot of us understood that. And like I said, I'm not a business owner. But these guys have worked their butt off trying to get you guys to come to understand. They need your information. And if you are scared, just email them. But I do believe, we don't want an enforcer. Isn't, has anybody heard of Heber City's enfor, what's it called there?
Code enforcer.
Code enforcer? Oh, is Heber City happy?
No.
Not even, well, the ones that.
And it just begun.
Yes, and it's just begun.
Yeah, they can't park a tractor out in front of their house.
Exactly.
And they have five chickens, they take one of them away.
Exactly.
And take them back to the dog pound.
Which they. And they charge them.
Wow.
Chicken.
We don't want those CCNRs. If we had those, we would've let, kept going, we would've let them come and kiss. So, so please just speak your mind and tell them what you need. Like you said, they need to know. They can't just, you know, we've talked and talked and talked enough exactly. They need to know, how many people do you want? How many is too many? You know, like these, they need that from you guys. Thank you for sharing your voice.
May I have a second gentleman? Anybody who was to give us input or should refer to the code and send you in writing, I would like to see the code say this. And you have that in your hand and you can put it all together and say, "Okay."
That would be incredibly helpful.
And it's in writing and it's in your hands. But refer to, you know, the code and the chapter and the verse and says, "I'd like for you to say this."
Again, private citizen, not council member, just private citizen. Casey, to address your request, I would like to go on record and say, I think that it would be a better idea to allow the external buildings. And in the suggestions that were made, I think B and C state this eminently fairly. "Home occupation is conducted entirely within residential dwelling and property. Home occupation uses accessory building and yard space consistent with private homeowners elsewhere in Daniel." I don't think I'm alone in this. Does anybody agree with that? I would suggest that that's what we change our new code to, some form of that. Okay.
Any more than you have to go up front. Thank you, Chris.
I would start it off by saying what I need for my business. I don't have any employees. I don't park any cars out there. I don't have customers come to my house. I don't have anything that goes on outside the building. I do all my work at my kitchen counter or at my customers' residence. Anything other than that is okay with me.
He's in compliance.
Most child.
Most child.
Found one.
Right. And I guess we have to leave before you guys start throwing darts at us.
Very good and constructive, and once again, I appreciate it. Any last comments?
I've got it.
Okay, well, come up there. Kim will start you next.
Awesome, I have a full sheet. I gotta turn the page. Awesome.
I'm Jordan Russell, business owner in Daniels. I am definitely not a code. I don't have the code sheet. Didn't know I needed one for the city of Daniel when I first moved here. I'm new to the town. Got my county codes, got all my stuff through the county. Comply as much as I can. Starting the business as a first-time small business homeowner. It's pretty tough to get things rolling. But, so my home has turned into where my yard used to be. Okay, I know you all know, I own the dumpster, the dumpster company right next to the landfill, the county landfill.
I thought you were.
You thought I was? You wanna make some.
You're pretty well camouflaged. I don't think you.
Yeah, I'm pretty camouflaged back there.
Tony.
One thing that I did have to issue.
We're neighbors.
Beneath the gun, that one. That's the actual code, Rick?
Yes.
I like everything that you were saying, a lot of what you were saying. And I like your changes that you have here. The only, thanks. The only real issue that I do have is, and I know it affects more than just me. I know you have a trucking company and there's probably some other trucking companies that are sitting here, is E on the general requirements. Vehicles comparable, personal vehicles, stores or parks in Daniel Township will be allowed. My truck is obviously a lot larger than something that you might drive for your work. So, I mean, respect the truck.
Yeah.
But I think that needs to kind of be a topic of issue.
What's truck talking about?
I have a roll-off truck.
Right, a roll-off container truck, right?
Right.
Who's got the old fire truck? Is that you?
No, that's not me. That's the only thing I don't have.
That's the old truck, fire, bark old.
Old, that old suit.
Yes, the old city truck.
Oh, yes, their old fast response.
Yeah, their fast, so that's, that's, that's bigger than your truck.
Oh, no, I.
Are you talking about the mechanic truck?
No, I'm talking about just sitting, it's opposite his house.
Midway Public Works.
Oh, yeah.
Correct, their old fast response.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's bigger than your truck, that's what I meant. They've got them sitting around town.
Yeah, and right next door.
And I don't mind, I mean, I'm sorry, you guys, but I like every one of your houses and your yards. I mean, that's the, that's the place I moved to. I don't wanna change.
Here, here. So, but that one's maybe one that needs to be, I mean, even in your redoing here of it.
That's okay, if you're mad, I wonder why you're blaming him.
Well, are you the one that has the truck? You do this that much?
No, I don't.
You're the truck.
I'm elected.
Okay, okay. So that's the one that I think maybe needs to be changed to.
Well, I think there's a bunch of them.
A certain, there can be a tonnage, a tonnage.
Well, I think, I mean, Coleman isn't here tonight, but.
He's white, dude.
He's white, dude.
Melon.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, they've got trucks bigger than yours.
Right.
They're golden.
Put it in your area.
You've got some chemtrails, I could tell you.
Yeah, there is.
Travel that all the time for a day.
You're saying.
But you're.
Yeah, well, that was the reason. See, I wanted, we wanted just to build a shop behind our house. We had seven acres, wanted to do it, they denied us. So then we had to go buy industrial property to put two trucks on that we just wanted to park, you know, so. But that was the county, right?
A number.
That was Daniel Township. That was the county, and then we switched over right to Daniels.